Counselor Shenier.
President.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Counselor Rivas.
Present.
We have a quorum. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Subcommittee Reports, DPW. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on May 1st. Couple of agenda items are on tonight's agenda itself, and we'll discuss those when we get to them. Thank you.
Moving on to Education and Services. Counselor Rivas.
Yes, we had a meeting on Thursday, 5/2. We have a couple of agenda items for recommendations. And we also have a meeting tomorrow at 6:30 to talk about the Bay Path Regional Vocational High School Budget, as well as Southbridge Public Schools Budget tomorrow at 6:30.
Thank you. Moving on to C, General Government. Counselor Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's no report at this time.
Moving on to Planning and Development. Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Threu Yu. There was a meeting held on Wednesday, May 1st. There were six agenda items that were discussed. Items number 23 through 28. And potentially there's a meeting again next week. Thank you.
Protections and Process of Property. Counselor Shenier.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on Monday, the 29th, and we have favorable recommendations from the Subcommittee. But I'd also like to take the time just to thank the department heads and town manager for presenting a budget that was workable and I think will do fine.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four. Consider and Accept the Minutes of April 22nd, 2024. Motion by Dow.
Second.
Second of Ishaenya. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of that meeting? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous, all present. Moving on to Chairman's Announcements. I'll make it brief. I handed out to the councilors the paperwork from DESI that was handed out to us at the meeting with Russell Johnson, the Senator, State Rep, Town Manager, myself, the School Committee, Counselor Rivas, as Chairman of Education and Service, attended. We all, finally, under Russell Johnson seems to be a better communicator than some of the other commissioners that we've had. So, the plan is here. If anybody would like a copy of it, we can get a copy of it. It's a working document of what we have to do in order to take over our schools with the transition time. So, we're moving forward on it. I felt good about the meeting. I think everybody in the room thinks it's time for Southbridge to get their schools back. I think one of the things that came out was expectations. I just want to mention that. We have a school committee and a receiver that has much friction. But I think the expectations that they put forward are reachable by both sides. Hopefully, the receiver and the school committee can come together. I know that the council is in full support of our school system and in full support of taking it back when the time comes. At this time, I have no further announcements on the Chairman's announcements. Moving on to Town Manager's announcements. It's Town Manager.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I'll go as quickly as possible. On the Henry Street Project paving is completed. The paving contractor will complete some additional work to address some issues that were done with the paving. Cabinet's water service was installed, and we're hoping to complete this by the end of the week with final inspection and be able to have the softball league go forward. In regards to Town Fields and Facilities, just as an update to the council, the DPW Director and myself will be touring several areas in town tomorrow to address some of items of concern that I brought up, I think, at the Subcommittee meeting. Among those is the Town Res, which we have an agenda item this evening. However, in walking that area where my grandchildren, my son, daughter-in-law, it appears that there's some issues with the dam there that we need to take a look at. Working on the retention ponds at Henry Street Field. We have seen, and Counselor Shenier forwarded to me some Facebook posts in regards to the West Street Tennis Courts. So, we'll be going to visit those courts tomorrow and try to come up with a plan of action for the Town Council. In regards to the Airport Fence Project last meeting, I advised you that there was a protest lodged by the third highest bidder. We had disqualified the second-low bid. A hearing was held through the Bid Protest Unit in the Attorney General's Office on April 26th. And on Friday, we received the decision, and the Attorney General's Office found that the town did not violate the bid laws, and we could proceed with awarding the contract. So, that notice of award went out today, along with the contract to the vendor, to make sure that we can get that project completed by the end of June. And activity continues in regards to the Community Center. Bids will be coming forward as soon as Mr. LaFlesh returns from his vacation. In regards to the budget, the public hearing will be held on May 20th at 6:00 PM to discuss the, or present for the public hearing FY-25 Town Budget and the Six-Year Capital Plan. In regards to the Solid Waste and Recycling Program, some updates on that. First off, the Health Department would like to thank everybody that came out on Saturday for the Beautify Southbridge Day. Many of the attendees included were the Girl Scouts, students from the Athletic Department. Some of you, probably, the students that are here may have participated in that. National Honor Society, some volunteers from out of town. Seventy-eight bags were filled with trash and many items. Kudos to all who attended, participated, and assisted with the event, especially the student athletes and all the students that came out. That's great to have. As you drive through downtown, you can see the downtown area. If you look, the streets are swept. The new flags are out, and it really looks great. We have the DPW up there at the Vienna cleaning that intersection and taking away some of the brush debris. And that's what we want, is pride in the Town of Southbridge, and we thank you all for that. In regards to the fourth-quarter billing for the curbside solid waste and recycling, the fourth-quarter billing is due May 16th and covers the period of April through June 4th for fourth-quarter FY-24. We continue to review the solid waste regulations with the Board of Health. And the, some billing issues have been resolved through the Treasure Collector's Office. They've corrected some of the errors in billing that went out, and we continue to work with those. The Town Manager, the Treasure Collector, and the Health Department are working towards procedures for possible abatements. Curbside leaf and yard waste continues for the next couple of weeks. They must be placed in the brown paper bags and open containers and on the curb at 7:00 AM. Again, that's only for those that participate in the curbside pickup. We have relocated the leaf and yard waste dumpster for use for property owners participating in the municipal curbside program. Those dumpsters are only available at the DPW Yard Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and Saturdays 12 through 4:00. We have somebody, staff, that will be parked in that area during those times. On Saturday, we will be looking to put up cameras for any illegal dump in, and we will be citing individuals that illegally dump. And I just, this announcement for everybody out there. The Board of Health and the Town Manager's Office worked on the next opt-out cycle. The next opt-out period will be opening tomorrow, May 7th, and will continue until May 30th. Those regulations were voted in by the Board of Health, and that will be for the first quarter of FY-25 only, or going forward. But it will not be backdated for anybody in the fourth quarter. The opt-out cycle will just be for anybody going the first quarter FY-25 forward. The rate will remain the same for the entirety of FY-25 at $115 per unit per quarter, which includes the yard and leaf curbside pickup. That means the rate for us, those that are participating in the Southbridge Municipal Pickup, the rate will remain at $115 per unit per quarter for the entirety of the fiscal year until June 30th, 2025. And finally, two more things real quick. In regards to provisions in my contract, the contract asks that I obtain my procurement certification within the first year of employment. Over the past eight years, I completed the three courses to obtain certification through the Office of the Inspector General. Upon completion, you may apply for the Associate MCPPO unless you have three years of documented procurement experience. Based on my application and 30-plus years of municipal experience, I've earned the full designation as a Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Official. And finally, just to announce a retirement. Ni, who works downstairs as the Assistant Tax Collector, has announced her retirement effective September 5th, 2024. Due to her unused time, her last workday in the Town Hall will be June 5th, 2024. So, I ask anybody to go down there and wish her well in her retirement. And I personally thank her for her 40 years of service for the Town of Southbridge. That's all I have for season one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Town Manager. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council on any issues not on the agenda tonight? State your name and address.
Derek Julian, 331 High Street. I come to you tonight because, well, I have to ask first. You have a presentation tonight for the cheerleaders, and I would like to talk about what's going on with the cheerleaders. Is that allowed, seeing as our presentation does not have discussion?
Say that again?
You have a presentation tonight for the cheerleaders.
Yeah.
I would like to talk about something that's going on with the cheerleaders. Is that okay, seeing as during presentations there is no discussion?
Right. If you want to discuss it now, go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to clear that with you. Thank you. So, it's a little, I'd like to congratulate them, number one. Number two, it's a little disheartening when these girls go out and do what they do. They take first place in the Nationals. They come back, they get a full bid to go to the next round. The school tells them that they cannot do fundraising, and they cannot go to the next round. It's very disheartening to hear that. They did fundraising, they got the permit, they went out and they got money. The parents went ahead, and the parents did a can drive to help them pay for anything else they needed to do down there for Nationals. Now, they come back and they want to do fundraising because they want to go to the next level. The thing is, is it was a quick turnaround. Tomorrow's the last day to sign up for it. I just don't see why the school told them no. I really don't. These girls deserve the chance to go out there and do fundraising and get this going. What?
It's twice you said that.
I know.
Circle back.
I know. You're right. So, I've heard a lot of other things that have been going on too, and I don't want to bring them up tonight because it's not my place. But I just want the town to know what is happening here. An athletic piece of our school has made serious accomplishments, and now is being shut down to go to the next level. And I don't think it's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council on any issues that are not on the agenda? Sir, state your name and address.
Thank you, council. My name is Michael Jandro. I live on 691 Gelfwood Road. I don't know if you guys are aware of this or not, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. There's a significant section of road on Gelfwood Road that does not have sidewalk access. And there's a lot of foot traffic that goes on that road because it's coming from the school. And we've got the youth center under construction, and Phase One is scheduled to be opened up this year. And I didn't know if you could either, I didn't know if you're working on it already or if you could fast-track some kind of public works project to put in a sidewalk for the foot traffic that uses it now and is going to be increased once the youth center comes in. Point two to that, once you turn the corner onto Torrey Road, going towards the school, there is a sidewalk, but it's not plowed or shoveled very well during the winter time, and it can be really hazardous. So, I just wanted to mention that. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council at this time? If not, we're going to move right into presentations. At this time, I would like to recognize the 2024 Southbridge High School National Coed Cheerleading Champions. Round of applause. Southbridge Middle High School presented to the Southbridge Middle High School Cheer Team. Resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Southbridge, whereas the hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, talent, exceptional team chemistry of the 2024 Southbridge Middle High School Coed Cheer Team has enabled these students, student athletes, to earn a national championship title. And whereas, winning the 2024 Hershey Open National Cheer Competition brought honor to the Southbridge Middle High School and the Town of Southbridge on the local, state, and national level. And whereas, the Southbridge Middle High School Coed Cheer Team achieved a perfect routine. And whereas, the Southbridge Middle High School Coed Cheer Team achieved a Show Your Spirit Award. And whereas, the coach, Brianna Liz, team members, parents, faculty, student body, and the Southbridge Middle High School were in guiding the team to victory through their unwavering support. And where, in witness therefore, on this day, Monday, May 6th, 2024, the council wishes to congratulate and celebrate the Southbridge Middle High School Cheer Team in its accomplishment. Scott Lozlo, Chairman and Southbridge Town Council. Brianna Liz, if you'd like the cheerleaders to do a routine, feel free.
He organized this event.
Yeah. Could I recognize Carrasco? Could you please come up? I would just like to thank you as one of the citizens of Southbridge for stepping up and making things happen in a big way for these girls. You're part of the fabric of this town, and I thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Chairman Lozlo and Town Manager Joe Van for the quick turnaround to be able to make this happen. These athletes deserve this, and they deserve more. They've put many hours, many minutes, many tears to be able to accomplish what they have accomplished. And they did it in a way that made Southbridge proud. There was no negative incident. They went to another state and represented Southbridge with true red and white pride. And as an alumni of Southbridge High, thank you. As a citizen, thank you. As a local pastor, thank you. As the police and fire chaplain of this town, thank you. You deserve it. You're great at what you do. Keep up the good work, and we wish you all the best. To the senior on the team, we wish you success. And all that knowledge that you have, come back and teach the others because they're going to need it because this team's going to keep going well. So, thank you. And on behalf of the Town, to thank you guys for allowing this to happen today. And I want to thank also Fire Chief Normandin, Chief Woodson, Deputy Chief, the fire staff and the police staff for making it happen today so these kids can be recognized by our town. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I would just, hold on. I would just ask if you girls want to do a cheer. You're on television. Everybody will see you in town if you'd like to do a cheer right here.
Mr. Chair, why the girls set up?
No.
Let me wait.
Just let them do it.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if it's too late or what, but I would like to suggest maybe the Town Manager call the receiver tomorrow and suggest to him that council supports the move to allow the girls to continue in their effort to...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, as a graduate of Southbridge High School many, many years ago, you represent the red and white fantastically. Counselor Daniel has always said, "Why not Southbridge?" And this is a why, as we continue to invest in you, the youth, and especially you, Coach Brianna. I've known you since you graduated, while we were in high school with the kids, my kids graduated. And I commend you for giving back to the community because through your hard work and dedication and commitment to Southbridge is what makes this community truly great. So, thank you very much, and congratulations.
So, I just want to say, as a 1989 graduate, I'm not afraid to say the year, of Southbridge High School and the only former cheerleader up here in the dais. I know how much hard work it takes, you know, day in and day out and running through drills and, you know, and all of the stunts and everything, and how difficult that is. And I just want to say I'm so incredibly proud, and it is such an honor to have you all here, you know, and just keep going. And we are fully behind you and cheering for you, you know, from home when you are on the road competing. So, good luck at the next level, and thank you so much for all of your hard work and how well you represent Southbridge.
Thank you, Chair Threu Yu. I see a couple of signs they have there. If you'd like to come stand here, all of you, with a sign and take a picture, you're welcome. Chair Threu Yu.
I would just like to say, the Town Manager will be talking to Mr. Valar, and I brought up a suggestion in talking to Counselor Adams of trying to use some of our government ARPA money to try and finance you to go to the next level. If it all works out, maybe we could step up to the plate because you did.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an emergency motion to suspend the rules to fund leftover, missing money with ARPA money.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Montigny to waive the rules to pay for the next trip, seconded by Counsel Dow. This is to waive the rules.
The first motion, yeah.
All those in favor of waiving the rules? Unanimous? To let the record show, it's unanimous. Counsel Montigny?
Yes, thank you. I think if the school department, the cheerleading coaches can get together with Dr. Valar and whoever, and the Town Manager, we can make this work. But in the essence of time, as it is an emergency, if tomorrow's the last day to sign up, council, I would like to ask that you please support this tonight. And maybe if Counselor Adams is the former, the ARPA chair...
Will he get fired?
Yeah, okay. You're the one with the numbers. No, I think it's appropriate, and I think this town needs this right now, especially as the school system is trying to make, as you said, good strides together. I think this would just really halt those things. And I think we all need to move forward together. We need to pay for the remainder so they can go.
So, to make the record clear, this motion is to use ARPA money to pay for the trip for the next step of their championship run.
Yes, sir.
And it's seconded by Counsel Dow. Any further discussion? One question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Threu Yu. Do we have a ballpark figure on how much this is going to cost to send them? All right.
I think the main thing is is to get your application in, that you're going tomorrow. I think we also have legwork with Counsel Adams's Subcommittee on ARPA. I think the intent is what it is. This council's intending to take care of it. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Shenier?
Absolutely, yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Lozlo?
Yes, we're proud.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
Y-E-S, yes.
Okay. If there is no further discussion under this presentation, I'd just like to, again, congratulate the girls and Brianna Liz. Good luck. We're here for you. Moving on to... I'd like to bring the meeting back to order. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and add WRTA Representative Joshua Rickman.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Shenier, seconded by Counsel Montigny. All those in favor? Opposed? The rules have been raised. We're adding the agenda item. I'd like you to know that the Advisory Board, Jasmine Rivas represents Southbridge on the Advisory Board. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Administrator Joshua Rickman. Josh, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Again, my name's Josh Rickman. I'm the Administrator for the WRTA. Tonight, I'm going to provide an overview of the WRTA, its services and administration. I'm also going to provide specifics about services here available in Southbridge. Just a big overview here. WRTA was founded in 1974 under Chapter 161B, which means we're celebrating our 50th anniversary this year. So, very excited to be joining the team here in this past eight months. We are one of 15 RTAs across the state, and we actually have the second-highest ridership of any of the RTAs in the state. And we have three main modes that we use. We have fixed route, which are the big buses. We have a demand response with the smaller vans you see operating in the area, as well as microtransit. demand response with the smaller vans you see operating in the area, as well as microtransit. You can see on the map there, the lighter blue communities are those with just demand response service, meaning there's no fixed route bus service, and the communities in dark blue are those that do have fixed route bus service, which includes Southbridge. Sliding into some service providers, unfortunately, I do use an acronym sometimes, so it's likely to give those up front before I get too far in there. So, for, for bus, we have a company called Central Mass Transit Management that works on behalf of WRTA. For demand response, given our 37 communities in broad area, we have four providers, Essential Mass Transit Management, SCM Elderbus located in Charlton, Paratransit Broker Services, Transit Management Inc., who kind of provides a scheduling and customer service side, as well as counseling agings. And we're currently working with VIA on a microtransit application in the Shrewsbury, Westboro, and Northboro area. So, just jumping into, you know, fixed route and, and what is fixed route. So, we have 26 fixed routes that operate in 16 of the member communities. You'll see here on the map some black lines and some red lines. The black lines represent the fixed route buses, the big 35 or 40-foot buses, and the red lines represent shuttle, shuttles, which one operates here between Southbridge, Dudley, and Webster. The majority of the service, as you can tell, is within the city of Worcester. It's something called a spoken hub model, meaning most of the services come all the way into downtown to come all the way back out, kind of like a, a bike tire, so to speak. Again, we contract out the service per Chapter 161B. WRTA cannot directly operate it under, under the state law, and right now, that contract is held by TransDev. And in FY23, we are 33%, higher than pre-COVID ridership levels, meaning we just hit just under 4 million passengers. So, demand response, and this is specifically to the ADA. So, ADA, American Disabilities Act, is transportation for people with disabilities, prevent them from using regular accessible WRTA fixed route buses. And so, you can see on this map here, there's kind of a green buffer that surrounds those black and red lines. So, basically, anybody that qualifies for ADA services, if the, let's say, the Route 29 that comes from Worcester down here to Southbridge operates Monday through Saturday, well, if they qualify, they can call and get a van ride between that, basically, the green service area, and it provides more of that, that demand response side of the services. There is an application process, as well as reservation system for the ADA service. While operating here in Southbridge, WRTA does work with a number of council on agings. In Auburn, Leicester, Millbury, Northboro, Oxford, and Shrewsbury, and West Boylston, we have something called the Mobility Management Model. And so, basically, these COAs, we have a contract with, and they operate on our behalf for individuals 60-plus and those with disabilities. So, individual will call back into that PBSTM I talked about, that customer service scheduling side of our, of our house, and they'll book their trips through them. And through that contract, we maintain all the vehicles. SCM Elderbus, which is located just up here in Charlton, has had a very longstanding relationship with WRTA, and we have a contract with them, provides services for seniors and disabilities within 20, sorry, now it's 22 of our community as of, as of last month. So, under SCM Elderbus, service provided five days a week within the community for in-town transportation. So, for Southbridge, that means that individuals can call SCM Elderbus the day before and book a trip to Big Bunny or wherever else they're trying to go to. There's also service provided three days a week out of town for medical, if they're trying to go to UMass Medical or somewhere else, and that's operated Monday, Wednesday, and Friday here in Southbridge. And lastly, for services, is microtransit, and this is something that WRTA is operating via something called the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Grant in the towns of, or portions of the town of Shrewsbury, Westboro, and Northboro. And right now, WRTA is conducting a study on that type of services and how to potentially retain those services into the future. Some examples of some vehicles we operate here, so we have 41 diesel buses, we have 13 hybrid buses, five body-on-chassis, or what we would call vans, and we are in the process of procuring seven battery electric buses, which should be expected to be delivered quarter one or quarter two of 2025. Under the demand response side, you can see those, the van on the right, we have 14 that operated by CMTM, 21 by SCM Elderbus, just up the road here in Charlton, and then 16 by the COA. For facilities, WRTA is very fortunate to receive a lot of funding in the last decade for new construction. You'll see on the left, a picture of our central hub at 60 Foster Street that was opened up in 2013, and that's where the administrative offices are, as well as our customer service side of the house. And on the right-hand side, you'll see our maintenance operation facility for CMTM, which is opened up in 2016. In terms of ridership, WRTA has recovered very well since the pandemic. As, as I shared earlier, in 2023, we were just under 4 million on the fixed route, and the demand response services brought us above 4 million rides. And then 2024, we collected the same, and then 2025, we're collecting a level off a little bit in, in terms of overall ridership. A little bit of history here, WRTA puts a lot of services back in 2016, 2017, but due to some state funding cuts, there was a reduction in those services in 2017, as well as a fare increase. So, we were about 4 million in 2016-ish, and we now recovered to that back now in 2024. Just in terms of the organizational structure, we, we are rather a lean organization. You'll see here the WRTA advisory board at the top of the graph, as they oversee my, my day-to-day job by me, and then my executive assistants, as well as my marketing communications manager. The staff you'll see here on the left-hand side, under the deputy administrator, that is the entirety of the WRTA staff. We have six budgeted positions right now. From there, on the right-hand side, you'll see our fixed route services, again, CMTM, demand response services, which includes our SCM Elderbus, COAs, and VIA, as well as our professional services that, that we use. Jumping right into services here in Southbridge, something that, I'm sorry, this might be hard to read on the, on the graph, but it should be within your, your packet there. Something that WRTA started to do this, this year is something called community and route profiles. Something that's important to me is be able to provide business and documentation about what WRTA is to the communities. What are we doing for services? What are we doing in terms of service profiles, fixed route or demand response? How much ridership happened in the community? How much cost went into that? And so, that, that was really the effort here. So, we did 37 of these route profiles. They're available on our website today, and really excited to get these out here. And we're going to be doing these on an annual basis, so that we can see kind of what goes into the cherry sheets, what comes out of that services, and how much ridership we're seeing. So, for Southbridge, and this, this data we gather specifically for the town, so it's, it's within the town's boundary in terms of ridership. So, Route 29, which I'll dive, jump into the next couple of slides, is a route that goes from Worcester down here to Southbridge, and that carried within the town 28,550 rides in fiscal year 23. This South Hadley, sorry, this, this, uh, uh, the Southbridge, Dudley, Webster Community Shuttle carried 4,000, and Demand Response carried about 12,500. So, overall, this, this costs about $600,000 in terms of annual costs for the WRTA, and the cherry sheet assessment is about $135,000 for the town. So, there's a, a lot of money that gets poured in from, from the state, but also the community assessments help us provide that service. At the bottom right, you'll see some contact information, again, who's providers in the community. So, if there's questions, these are the people you can reach out to. Jumping into Route 29, which I just mentioned on the last slide, this is that main fixed route bus you'll see coming in and out of the community. So, this one starts at downtown Union, downtown Union Station, and travels out through Auburn, Charlton, and then to downtown Southbridge, with services Monday through Friday. So, riders can access key points of interest, College Square, Polar Beverages, Auburn Mall, Charlton, Mass Hire Southbridge, downtown Southbridge, Heron Hospital, and the Big Bunny. So, in 2023, which is last year, this, this route carried a total of 68,000 passengers. So, about 40% of those passengers are actually traveling to here or from here in Southbridge. So, it's a significant services for this area. On the community, there's a route profiles, kind of share what type of service hours there are, weekday and Saturday, service frequencies, efficiencies, again, going back to that cost, how much is it costing us per passenger to move, so really helps us ability to help us better track what those services are. And just jumping into the Southbridge, Dudley, Webster Community Shuttle, this is one of the newer routes that WRTA put in, I, I want to say back in the 20, late 2018, 2019 timeline, and this spans 16 miles connecting Southbridge, Dudley, and Webster, provided Monday through Friday. The shuttle provides two connections to Worcester, one here at the 29 here in Southbridge, as well as the Route 42 in Webster. So, riders can access key points of interest, including the Big Bunny, Heron Hospital, and Southbridge, and Webster, Dudley District Court, Nichols College, and Webster Center. The format follows the same way. We're describing service hours, how much it costs, the, the authority to operate, and then some of the service efficiencies that we have. And just jumping into how to contact WRTA, we put it together here, just really quick notes about who to call, what our phone number is. There's also a feedback form on our website, which we redesigned this past year, as well as Paratransit Services. So, if there's questions about, you know, how do I, how do I qualify for ADA? What is SCM Elderbus? These are all numbers that residents or anybody can call and get the answers from WRTA. And with that, I just want to thank the council's time today. Thank you so much.
Are there any questions by counselors? Counselor Shenyi?
Thank you. I just want to say that I appreciate the free services that have provided to the community. But what the concerns I have is, once that ARPA money runs out, what happens?
Sure. So, right now, the WRTA has been fair free since 2020 at the onset of COVID. WRTA received a significant amount of CARES Act funds that we've been used, using to actually fund the service. The ARPA funds we received actually put into actual revenue service that, that we're operating. So, right now, the, the advisory board is committed to review this on an annual basis. So, the last two years that it's been approved on the annual basis, our state funding also comes on an annual basis. So, we're, we're committed to reviewing that annually, and as the funding allows, we are continually to pursue any type of grant that is coming our way, working with CMRPC, looking for grant opportunities, and, and we're certainly, certainly appreciative of, of the funds received from the federal government, and we think that's in large part what got us back to our pre-COVID ridership levels.
So, if I may continue, the concern I have is, when all, if all of a sudden next year they decide to put a fee on there, will, will the townspeople, the people that utilize that in this community have ample notice to either find different ways to get to the city or be stuck here?
Sure, absolutely. So, one, one of the roles responsibility of the advisory board is to approve a budget on an annual basis. That's, that's within the, the advisory board's roles responsibilities, and administratively, we respond what the board directs us to do. So, in terms of timeline, yes, there'd always be ample notice. When we go up to these votes, it's typically, we go for initial vote for the fiscal year in March, and then it would be then voted on formally by April. So, at a minimum, that gives us two months before the start of the fiscal year, but likely, we'd need more time in order to get, get the word out. But the, the board's been very cautious of those things.
One more question. Southbridge has been connected tri-community, Southbridge, Sturbridge, Charlton. Are there any plans to be able to expand into Sturbridge to utilize the grocery stores, Walmart, doctor's office, dentist's office in Sturbridge? There's quite a few of them in there. So, is there a plan to extend maybe the route into that community?
I, I appreciate that comment. Right now, I'd say we don't have any specific written plan saying, this is the way we're going to make that happen. What I would share is that WRT will be going into what's called a comprehensive service analysis, or CSA. We have to do that every five years per MassDOT, and so, this type of feedback's really important for us to take in, so we can understand what kind of needs we have across our 37 communities.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Any other discussion by any other counselors? Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mister Chair, through you. Are you able to project out through the following years ridership levels?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Do you have, do you have some kind of an algorithm, or are you able to project out ridership levels in the coming years?
Yes. So, so we do have a way we can predict what type of ridership level we'd anticipate. Typically, that is associated with how many revenue days we're going to have, how many revenue hours we're going to have, is there new services, projecting service reliability, you know, how, if we have done a lot of missed trips, and those things will help us kind of project out where we are. When we start looking, you can kind of see in one of those graphs here, that we said probably this upcoming year, we don't expect as big of a jump, just because there is not a lot of new services planned or, or significant reliability improvements. So, right now, we're projecting a little low in terms of overall increase.
But you're projecting an increase?
A slight increase, yep, about, about a 4% increase.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? If not, I'd like to thank you very much for the presentation tonight.
Thank you very much for your opportunity.
Have a safe trip back. Moving on.
You can leave it, Josh.
Moving on to Agenda Item 8C, Dave Adams, Veterans Council Update on Monuments, Incentive, and Memorial Day Parade. Dave?
First of all, I just wanted to, Mister Chair, Town Manager, counselors, residents, we're, as required, every November, every May, I'm required to come up here and give you a quick brief on the initiative that we started here a couple of years ago, just to keep with transparency, some of the funds, and what we're looking at doing here in the near future. So, first of all, as, as everybody knows, we, we started off with the World War Memorial Park that's pretty much been completed. I gave you a basic, what it kind of looked like before, as you can see from the aerial shot, it was one monument in there. Come on now.
There you are in boot camp.
Well, it wasn't boot camp, buddy. I appreciate that, counselor. All right. So, it's, it's obviously not popping up for some reason. So, um, all right. I was showing you some pictures of what it looked like before, and then what it looks like now. A lot of residents have already gone over there. You take a look, it's pretty much 99, 99% completed. Gave you pictures, or at least I was going to show you some pictures of what the, the sign looked like, because there was no sign there before. Go through the whole process again, and, and, like I said, 99% of it has been completed. The last things that we have to do in the World War Memorial Park is actually the landscaping that you'll start seeing here in a couple of weeks for, for this season, then you'll see another one come, come the fall timeframe, preparing for Veterans Day itself. Then, we're looking at selling some of the bricks that are there. I've worked with Dean and the town manager to figure out how to do that on a public property through a not-for-profit organization. We figured that all out. As soon as we get the company locked on and contracted between the Veterans Council and them, we'll start selling those bricks, and we're looking at between $150 to $200 a pop on that. We only have like 20 bricks right at the World War Memorial Park, right at the, the base of the, the flagpole. And then the cleaning and the refurbishment. So, tonight, you're also going to see a heritage grant for an acceptance, and also the town council was gracious enough to, to vote in $15,000 ARPA money. We have about $30,000 possibly to go ahead and, and clean that park up, not only clean it, but clean the monuments, but refurbish some of the monuments that are missing, some medallions on, the old bronze plaques from the American Legion for the, the Gold Star families. Also, we're, right now, I'm working on some quotes. We should have those to the town manager here quite shortly. We, we reached out to five different organizations or companies, and we heard back from two, actually, three, and we have a full quote, and just kind of still waiting on a second quote, but we're doing our due diligence to make sure that we have at least three quotes out there, but if they don't respond, they don't respond. But we'll be presenting that to the town manager very, very soon, and hopefully, this will be completed, be completed by June, July, refurbished and everything. You'll start seeing scaffolding being built around the World War I monument itself. And then the last thing that, that we're going to be putting in is a donor plaque for all those people that donated to the cause itself for the World War Memorial Park. We plan on building a little nice little plaque right for it, around a granite piece. That being said, now Phase Two is in the Dresser Memorial Park itself. Right now, we have, we consider it Phase Two. We finished up Phase One with the World War Memorial Park. We have a 60% design that's been completed, over 60% design. And just recently, we, the Veterans Council of Southbridge, which we have a few members out here today, voted on placing the monuments throughout that, you know, like the Vietnam, the Italian, some of the monuments that are at the DPW lot, placing those throughout the park itself, and we gave those to our architectural designer. We've had the surveys done on Dresser Memorial Park, like I said, 60% or, or more on the design portion, and we've had the engineering study completed already. The only things that we really have to do is the fundraising period piece, which were between a million and a half to $2 million project of donations, and also electrical engineering, because we're going to add some more power to the Dresser Memorial Park itself. Then, we're also going to go out and purchase or, or build Iraqi Freedom, Enduring Freedom, and a POWMI monument as well for, for the park itself. I wanted to show, the big thing I wanted to show you tonight was the locations of where we were putting some of this stuff, because really, if you remember the design itself, it was kind of like a parade deck. It's a three-tiered parade deck, but the Veterans Council actually threw me for a loop, and they decided to put some of those monuments throughout the park itself, but it's, with the ability to get to those monuments and, and read about them. And then, so we, we decided that, and really, we're going full steam ahead unless the council has any type of questions itself. I'm going to pass this around real quick to show you kind of where some of the monuments are going. It's all in yellow and red. Now, if you don't have any questions from here, that concludes my presentation as far as Dresser Memorial Park, World War Memorial Park. One thing that I did, wanted to show you upon this slide presentation, was that the Veterans Council just the other day voted... upon this slide presentation was that the Veterans Council just the other day voted to put an application in for the wall that heals. Has anybody ever heard of that wall? So, it's a 3/4 scale size Vietnam wall, and we're going to apply for that right after Memorial Day. We're going to put the application in, and we should be able to know by October if we get approved or not. Our attempt is, I guess, is a pretty quick application. I sat down with Keith and Tracy, along with individuals from DC area, to see how this approach goes, and we're actually looking at three different locations right now as we go, and I've talked to the Town Manager about that. But it's a 3/4 size, 375-foot Vietnam wall with all the names on it, just like, I don't know if you remember, there used to be a 50% wall, or half-scale wall. Now, they made it to 3/4 scale, 375 feet long, 7 and 1/2 feet tall, lit, manned 24/7 for six days, Tuesday through Sunday, and they do travel around the United States, March through November of each year. So, they mentioned that about 90 organizations apply every single year, about 30 get accepted just based on their stuff. There's no whims, like, it's not a first-come, first-served or anything like that. What they do is they take a look at their own traveling schedule, and then they pick those locations. And obviously, we would pick something for the summertime during that period of time. Now, it's also open at night, because a lot of Vietnam veterans will go there in the evening when it's quiet and nobody else is around. Along with that is a 53-foot trailer as well that travels with it. It's a traveling museum. What they'll do is, they will provide some mementos that were dropped off at the Vietnam Wall in DC. They'll bring those aboard. They also have three large-screen TVs that, one is dedicated to those, I believe it's four Southbridge veterans, right? So, we'll have an opportunity to reach out to families and say, "Would you like your loved one who has since passed, not maybe because of combat, but maybe combat, maybe because of, it was their time?" And they will be able to see their family scroll throughout that monument, and plus, they'll highlight where those Southbridge Vietnam veterans' names are located that died. If you look at the Veterans Room upstairs, we have about seven or eight that have been scratched from the original Vietnam wall. So, those names will be up there as well. And then obviously, it gives a history lesson on the Vietnam Wall itself and the war from 1955 all the way through '75. So, I don't know if you can zoom in on something like this, but what I'll do is, I'll provide the template to the council, and I will also provide it through social media as well. All right. The Veterans Council will take responsibility for the logistical nightmare that may come along with that as well, and this is the financial nightmare that may be coming along with that. We'll be able to raise donations for that. But we thought it'd be a great thing to do for Southbridge. And lastly, we have Memorial Day Parade that's going on on May 27 at 10:00 AM, starting here at the Town Hall, marching all the way, and obviously, we're going to recognize the GAR monument. We'll have our Grand Marshal there to say a few words. We've already locked on a lot of, like, the bands, and the high school, and the Trinity Catholic Academy, and the DPW, and the police, and the fire, a few other people as well to march in the parade. Last year was the largest parade that I'd seen since I've been on the Veterans Council itself, and we'll march down to the Honor Roll. Obviously, we'll do some speeches down there, and then end over at the Gold Star Mothers Monument, and then from there, those that march in the parade, only march in the parade, will be invited, will be invited to the DOD facility, Wellsworth, to have a little bit of chow with us that day. So, I'll open it for questions. I apologize, the PowerPoint didn't work, but...
Any questions by any councilors? Counselor Rivas?
Just a quick question. I thank you for the presentation and the update. Have the Veterans Council thought about, for the Korean War piece, adding maybe a mention about the Borin Ganiers, the 65th Infantry from Puerto Rico?
We can. We can bring it up. We can have a conversation about that, because I haven't built the script yet. And I mean, we're always open to a little bit of change here and there, and how it goes. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion by any of the councilors? Counsel, I'd just like to thank you for your service. Outstanding as usual.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number nine, vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Jasmine Sanchez, a clerk, Board of Assessor, MS-19, for the three-year term effective immediately May 5, 2027.
So moved. Second.
Actually, I misspoke earlier. There was one item on tonight's agenda, and it is unanimously recommended tonight by general government.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Congratulations. Would you like to talk? We'd like Southbridge to see the hard-working board, and I know that you do a great job down there, and congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Just wanted to say thank you to everybody.
Any questions? No questions? Thank you very much. Moving on to 10, vote to ratify the employment agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Joanne Savagnon, ARPA Administrator, Financial Analyst, funds to be paid through the ARPA grant.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 11. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Sam Lozo as laborer, as recommended by the DPW Director, effective upon completion of onboarding and ethics.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Did we get an update on the application for Mr. Lozo?
No.
Through you to the Town Manager.
Yeah, I apologize. I did not, I believe it was just an oversight. He's employed by the school district, so he has to be available to apply, to work in the United States. I think it was just a mistake, so...
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the DPW Director or to the Town Manager. Is this mean now that the DPW, the maintenance men, is fully staffed?
There is one more vacancy.
One more vacancy? Well, that's great to hear, because I just want to thank Mr. Benoit for all of his hard work. You know, the clock has been ticking for almost a year and a half. You've done a lot of hard work, and, you know, these back-to-back appointments tonight, you've certainly earned the crown in my eyes, and the Town of Southbridge is definitely lucky landing these two gentlemen, and all I can say about these appointments is it's simply fantastic. Thank you.
Any further discussion by any other members?
Mr. Chair, just through you, DPW unanimous with everybody. Support of...
Unanimous vote by DPW?
Yep.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstention? One abstention? Moving on to 12, vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Fabian Morales as laborer, as recommended by the DPW Director, effective upon completion of onboarding and state ethics.
So moved.
Second.
The motion and second. Discussion?
Unanimous as well, DPW, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Unanimous vote at DPW to recommend favorably? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 13, vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Todd A. Fernandez of Oxbridge, Mass. as a special traffic constable, based on the Police Chief's recommendation and for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2027. We have a motion and a second? Recommended unanimously by subcommittee. Any discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 14, vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Kenneth E. Stewart of Springfield, Mass. as a special traffic constable, based on the Police Chief's recommendation for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2027. Motion by Shinja, seconded by Counselor Dow. Counselor Shinja?
Unanimously approved by the subcommittee.
Unanimously approved by the subcommittee. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 15, vote to accept the warrant for the local election on Tuesday, June 4, 2024.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Shinja, seconded by Dow. Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to make it say June 11, 2024, please.
Second.
There's an amendment on the floor to change the date to the 11th, seconded by Dow. Any discussion on the amendment? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? The amendment passes. Main motion has amended. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda item 16, vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment for the following to the Town Manager's Urban Community and Forestry Grant Program Advisory Board to work with the Town Manager and Department of Public Works Director regarding the implementation and oversight of the grant program. First name, Steve Brady, Jeff Hillman, and Johnny Moore.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion by Dow, seconded by Shinja. Discussion. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for bringing this directly to council. We've been working with Peg and Rich, Steve Brady and his group. We got him the grant for $1 million, and part of that grant is that we need to create a shade tree commission. To create that commission, it's going to take a bylaw amendment, so we're working on the bylaw. But in the meantime, we'd like to appoint these three individuals to work with me on the advisory board, to work on the drafting of those bylaws, as well as to meet some grant requirements, that we have to have a board in place in a timely manner. So, this is the first step, that we would then come to council with the bylaw amendment, the formal tree commission. They will also work with me in the development of a job description for the urban forester. That would be a 20-hour position, and then we would come to council with the recommendation for the appointment of that. So, this is the first step in that $1 million grant. Also, create the policies for right-of-ways and work with Rich, and we've had meetings with Rich. So, I would ask that you support this right now, so that we can get this going.
Discussion by any councilors? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 17, vote to award the SCADA Input Output System Replacement Data 64886. Oh, I'm sorry, I got that in the wrong line. There was a typo on this. I'm going to add the number in the second line. Replacement Upgrade Project to Woodard and Curran for $59,750 to be paid from project account SCADA I at slash O data 64886 TBD. Authorize the Town Manager to sign memorandum of agreement and other all-related documents.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Shinja, seconded by Counselor Dow. Discussion?
Just, we did not have the account number, so it's not TBD. The actual account number is 64886, so that is the account number for that project. So, that was confirmed by the accountant, so that project has been set up.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 18, vote into a services contract between the Town of Southbridge and Solitude Lake Management in the amount of $2,132 for the treatment of the RES recreation area. Allow the Town Manager to vote all related documents.
So moved.
Motion second. Discussion. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I don't consider myself a big environmentalist, but we are dumping chemicals into the RES, and just going online and looking at their website and other websites on dumping chemicals to remove algae. I understand, their website, they say it's totally harmless. Other websites say it will kill some fish, because you're depleting the oxygen. I'm not going to vote against it. I just think that if they're going to come here and dump chemicals in the RES, I think that they should come here and at least explain to us exactly what type of chemicals they're using, and whether it's safe for humans, for fish, going forward. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Town Manager.
Through you to the previous speaker. We'll definitely take a look at that. Again, as I stated in my announcements, I am going with the DPW Director to look at that facility, and we'll make further recommendations upon that inspection as to how to proceed. There's been some recommendations to possibly drain it and do different things, so we'll look at that, at the overall plan as we move forward with town facilities. But thank you for that information, and I'll have the DPW reach out to that company to make sure that we have a full understanding of what kind of chemicals they'll be using.
Counselor Shinja?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Town Manager. Tomorrow, you do your walk-around with the DPW Director. Do you feel that this 2132 isn't necessary? You'll not do this?
Yes, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Rivas?
Just a quick clarifying question. Now, is this amount coming through the Recreation Department or DPW?
That's out of Recreation.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Counselor?
Thank you. Last year, I think we do this every year, and I remember friends of the RES had some input into it, had briefed us on, if you don't do it, there ends up being bugs and a number of other things that just come around, not just the algae. So, I think if, I mean, I don't want to drain the RES, but I think you should definitely support this if it's going to continue, because it'll just make it a lot worse mess. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 19, vote to confirm the agreement between the Town of Southbridge and AFM Morello and Sons Oxford Asphalt Incorporated for the furnishing of asphalt materials. Allow the Town Manager to sign all related documents.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 20, vote to confirm the agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Atlas in the amount of $4,200 for the asbestos consulting services related to the kitchen renovations project. Allow the Town Manager to sign all related documents.
So moved. Second.
Motion and seconded. Discussion. If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 21, vote to confirm the agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Ty &amp; Bond for consulting services in regards to procuring a new wastewater operations contract and authorize the Town Manager to sign all related documents.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Discussion.
Roll call, please.
Is there any other discussion? Roll call requested.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Shinja?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Lozo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Eight to one. Motion passes. Agenda item number 22, vote to accept the Veterans Heritage Grant in the amount of $15,000 from the State Historical Records Advisory Board, which will be used to clean and refurbish the monuments at the World War Memorial Park.
So moved. Second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, Counselor Adams wanted me to let you know he was recusing himself from this.
Counselor Adams has recused himself. Any further discussion on the issue? Not all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 23, let it be known, Counselor Adams is rejoining the board. 23, vote to approve, vote the approval of the extension of the Mass Trails Grant Contract to June 2025, if approved by the Department of Conservation and Recreation.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Items 23 through 20...
Items 23 through 28 were all unanimously approved by the PND Subcommittee.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 24. Vote to approve applying for the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism Destination Development Capital Grant to construct the downtown historic walk tour for the, for up to $50,000 and allow the Town Manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Again, this was approved at PND. Unanimous? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 25. Vote to authorize the use of the Park Grant FY23 funds to hire VHB to help design the Pocket Park for 76 Central Street for $1,400 and authorize the Town Manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Again, it was unanimous at Subcommittee, PND. Go forward. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Number 26. Vote to authorize the use of the remaining $30,000 in Park FY23 grant funds to hire the contractor with the lowest quote to construct a Pocket Park and purchase items for 76 Central Street to ensure funds spent by the grant close out in June 2024 and allow the Town Manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. It was unanimous by PND. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 27. Vote to approve applying for up to $200,000 in green communities funding for weatherization upgrades in the town buildings. There's a motion?
So moved.
Second.
For a second?
Second.
Second by Daniels. Town Manager?
Yeah, Peg will ask you to amend that 200 to 225? Correct, 225? That's the max that we're eligible, so allow us to apply up to 225, an extra $25,000 based on her and Rich DPW's work. So just change that to $225,000.
There's a motion to amend the number to add 25,000 to the 200,000?
A second.
So moved.
There's a motion and second. Discussion on the amendment? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous. Moving on to the main motion as amended. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous. Moving on to 28. Vote to approve the transfer of $25,000 from project 6473 Rail Trail Stabilization to Mass Trails Project 87161 as matching funds towards an additional $100,000 from the Mass Trails for construction administration, construction oversight, and of the Quinewalk Valley Rail Trail. Allow the Town Manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion? If not, all, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd appreciate it, just a little clarity on this one. This is $25,000 funds towards the $625,000 that we are receiving. We're receiving $500,000 from the state. We're going to put in $125,000 in the town. 25, this is 25,000, and the other $100,000 is coming from which account? I'm a little, it's a little confusing on that one.
Peg.
Good evening, counselors. I'm sorry I couldn't be at Subcommittee, that I was sick. Thank you for covering. I think they did a great job. The other $100,000 was already approved when you initially applied for the fiscal year 23 Mass Trails Funds. And at that time, you adopted a resolution. And it was, it had to be approved in advance that you would go out to, for borrowing for the entirety of the funds. And at that time, the accountant Karen Harnoy explained, or Melissa Zawadzki was the treasurer at the time, and said she was familiar with these. And that what would happen is you go out for the borrowing, but you end up not, not, you give approval to borrow, but you end up not borrowing as much because you're only being, you're only using, you know, a portion of the funds. So you have to allow the town, but then we end up only using two-thirds of it, or one-third of it, excuse me, we get reimbursed the other two-thirds.
So we're putting through 25,000, $100,000 coming. We've already approved. $500,000 is coming from the state. Is that pretty much it?
Correct, correct. Your summary was very good. Yeah, except for just reminding you that the hundred was approved back two years ago.
And the town is obligated to pay an additional 20% towards the project. Is that what this is? That's at the end of the paragraph.
So I think I explained it in the memo. When we initially applied, I thought the entire grant was for $500,000. And so I thought that we were paying, you know, 100-something, and they were paying 300-something. And lo and behold, when I was going back to them about how we're delayed, they clarified you actually have up to 625. So you have another $100,000 you can access from the state if you can find the other 25,000. And so that's when I talked to the Town Manager about how I felt like this was a complete godsend for me because we need the, we initially were talking about Eric Ramsey compensating for construction oversight, being that person out there to make up for what we don't have for construction oversight. The EDA is requiring a high level of construction oversight for the project. And then, lo and behold, I had this extra $125,000 if we can use the 25,000 from the Quinewalk Valley Stabilization Fund.
Thank you, Peg.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Dow.
Thank you for your hard work.
Oh, you're welcome.
I wish everybody will come forward and look for money for the town to improve everything, not giving you a hard time. Take care.
I would just like to comment on the team concept. All the players, department heads, Town Manager, the way you move swiftly as a group. And I know there are questions we have to ask, but I think job well done.
Thanks.
Keep it up. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Moving on to 29. Vote to adopt MGL Chapter 90, Section 17C, Establishment of a 25 miles per hour speed limit on the roadways inside a thickly settled or business district in town to become effective July 1, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second.
This was unanimously approved by PPP Subcommittee.
Discussion. If there's no discussion, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 30. Vote to approve the transfer of $545.50 from project account 6811 DPU Ride Share Surcharge to account 0014299553300DPW Roads Material.
So moved.
There's a motion by Dow, seconded by Counselor Shinja. Did this go to DPW?
No, this did not go to.
Okay. No recommendation?
No, I did, I absolutely did. Yeah, I apologize, I didn't mark this one off, number 30. Nah, it's all.
I know it's a long agenda, guys. Stay awake a little while longer. The unanimous recommendation to DPW. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. 31. Vote to approve the transfer of $50,000 Sewer Enterprise Revenue to account 600440530000 Specialized Services for the procuring of the new wastewater contract consulting from Ty &amp; Bond.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion?
Unanimous.
Unanimous to DPW, confirm.
Roll call.
Roll call, vote?
Counselor Shinja?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Eight to one. Moving on to 32. Vote to approve the transfer of $5,000 from DPW account 001495513100 Overtime Snow and Ice to 001499-553100 Signs and Posts to cover purchases for signs and posts through the end of the year, through the end of FY24.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Dow, seconded by Counselor Adams. Discussion.
Positive.
Unanimous recommendation for DPW. No further discussion, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to Agenda Item 33. Vote to approve the transfer of $2,500 from DPW account 001495-513100 Overtime Snow and Ice to 001499569000 to cover elevator inspections, reinspection, and additional reimbursement through the end of FY24.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and by Shinja, seconded by Dow?
Positive at the DPW.
Positive recommendation, DPW. Discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to approve the transfer of $10,000 from the Police Department account 001210511000 Salary to account number 001210-530000 Specialized Services to cover the additional cost of expense that for the town of Oxford is charging for the use of the animal kennel.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second.
Mr. Chairman, number 34 to FOU are unanimously approved by the PPP Subcommittee.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. How much is Oxford charging us to use their kennel? I mean, this is, this is, is this only for the next two months? Or is this back prorating the cost? Through you to the Town Manager.
I'll defer to the exact numbers through the police chief, but it is per dog, per day that they charge us. And this is anticipated cost to get us through to the end of the fiscal year. Any additional funds that are left over would then revert to the general fund to free cash.
Chief?
Good evening. What the Town Manager said, just to echo that, we pay 500 a month. Right now, we're in arrears a couple of months because that account's at zero. We also pay $20 a day. But the problem is if we have seven dogs there at $20 a day, times 20 days, it can add up quickly. So I don't want to have to come back here. I do not think we're going to need $10,000. But I just want to put it in there now to be safe. And then, as the manager had said, it all goes back to the general fund.
Well, thank you. I was just concerned that we were being charged $5,000 a month
No, no, sir.
to use Oxford. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any further questions? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 35. Vote to approve the transfer of $3,000 from the Fire Department account 001220511000 Salaries and Wages Permanent to 001220515000 Holiday Pay to cover costs for holiday pay for the remainder of the fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. It was unanimous at Subcommittee to recommend. Discussion? If none, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 36. Vote to approve the transfer of $4,500 from the Fire Department account 001220511700 Salaries and Wages Part-Time to account 001220515000 Holiday Pay to cover the cost of holiday pay for the remainder of the fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, motion second. Unanimous recommendation from Subcommittee. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 37. Vote to approve the transfer of $10,000 from the Fire Department account 001220518200 Assignments to account 001220515000 Holiday Pay to cover costs for the holiday pay for the remainder of the fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Recommendation by Subcommittee was unanimous. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So the total of all of these is $17,500 for two holidays to the end of the fiscal year, correct?
It's for the, I would say yes, if it's, if that's what you're saying. There's two holidays left. You have Memorial Day.
And Juneteenth.
And Juneteenth, yep.
Okay.
And that's for the, as I think we stated in the, in the Subcommittee meeting was that the former Town Manager, interim Town Manager had an accountant for it in the last year's budget. So we're doing the transfer this year to make up for that.
Okay, I mean, I was looking at last year's budget. I think there was $106,000 for a holiday. That was up from $85,000 the year before. But I do realize that you hired more firemen. I don't understand why the Fire Department wouldn't say, look, this is how many firemen we have. This is what we'd need for holiday. I, I don't, that one perplexes me, why a Town Manager would say, well, we're cutting that, when this is how many you have, period, right? Correct?
I, through you, Mr. Chairman, I totally agree with you. And as we've talked during the budget, we have been with Dean, Michelle, Christine, we have been really poring through those accounts to make sure that they're as tight as can be. So hopefully, next year, we won't have these issues. We're going off a budget that was put together by an interim Town Manager and a staff with no finance director. So we're doing our best to make sure we make it out to the end of the year and have money retained to close out to free cash. So I can't answer for the previous Town Manager or Finance Department. I can only say where we're at today and how we're moving forward to make sure that it is accurate and make sure we get through to the end of the year.
Further discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 38. Vote to approve the transfer of $1,100 from the Fire Department account 001220519300 Tuition to account 001220519200 Uniform Allowance to cover costs for half and a uniform allowance for two new employees per collective bargaining agreement, Article 23.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Recommendation was favorable at Subcommittee. Discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. All present? Moving on to 39. Vote to approve a transfer of $50 from Fire Department account 001-220-519300, tuition to account 001-220-524200, data processing to cover the costs of data processing for the remainder of the fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Recommendation with Subcommittee was favorable. Discussion? No discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? All present? Moving on to agenda number 40. Vote to approve the transfer of $3,500 from the Fire Department account 001-220-542200, data processing supplies and computers to account 001-220-521000, electricity to cover the costs of electricity for the remainder of the fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Unanimous by Subcommittee, favorable? Any discussion? The town manager? I mean, excuse me.
Not yet.
Yeah, yeah.
So on this one here, the, this account, data processing supplies and computers was budgeted at $4,500. You're taking $3,500 out of there, so you only spent $1,000 out of this account, correct?
I didn't spend $1,000 out of it. The Fire Department spent $1,000 out of it, and he stayed there at the Subcommittee meeting that he wasn't purchasing the computers that he anticipated this year and would move to next year, so he's trying to cover the electricity cost. So that was his recommendation at that point.
Okay. Thank you. I, apparently I didn't hear him say that. I just thought, you know, you're, next year, you're budgeting the same amount, $4,500, and yet he only uses $1,000. But if he's planning on making some more purchases next year, then I guess that answers my question. Thank you.
Any further discussions? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? All present? Moving on to 41. Review and amend to Town of Southbridge Mass Code of Bylaws, Chapter 11, Departmental Revolving Funds, Section 11-500, authorize revolving funds by adding the following.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, thank you. Following, 11-500.7, Commercial Loan Revolving Fund, 11-500.7.1, Fund Name, there shall be a separate fund called the Commercial Loan Revolving Fund authorized for use by the Economic Development and Planning Department. 11-500.7.2, Revenues, the town accountant shall establish the Commercial Loan Revolving Fund as a separate account and credit to the fund all of the ARPA commercial loans charged and received by the department in connection with the ARPA Commercial Loan Program. 11-500.7.3, Purpose and Expenditures, during each fiscal year, the Economic Development and Planning Department may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Commercial Loan Revolving Fund for expenses associated with ARPA Commercial Loan Program, office supplies, advertising, and any expenses related to the collection of funds. 11-500.7.4, Other Requirements/Reports? None. 11-500.7.5, Fiscal Years, the Commercial Loan Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July 1st, 2023. And that's the second reading.
We consider that the second reading. At the next meeting, we will vote on, well, the third reading, and we will be voting on it.
I do have a question about this one.
Go ahead.
Through you, to the town manager. This is something that I think that we really need to review it a little bit more. I mean, I, I do have some questions, and I would like, I would like some answers on it, like, has the work been started? Has it been contracted out? Have we received our first reimbursement in April, as was in the very first motion that this was made on? Are there contracts for the loans, and are there contracts for the, the projects being done? This is some of the questions that I have, and I appreciate it, not tonight, but I would appreciate it eventually if I get some, some of the information that I'm looking for. Thank you.
Have you sat down with the manager and?
I did send the town manager an email, but we'll sit down. I'll sit down when I talk to him.
Mr. Chairman, I certainly understand Council Marquetti's concerns on this, as I think we all have concerns on this, given what had transpired. This is totally separate from those issues. This is to make sure that we have a program in place that we can, those loans that are recaptured, but I will get a whole brief so that we can discuss it and get it to you.
Well, okay.
So procedurally, nothing has to be amended on this pertaining to his questions?
This gives us the ability to take those funds that were, we, that are loans that are outstanding, that are going to begin to repay, and make sure that we have a revolving fund that we can put those funds in to either be reused. Anything that's reused would vote of Council.
I understand that. My question is, his questions that he has.
Is not related.
Is not related to this?
That's true.
Okay.
Well, could I ask?
It is, in a way.
No, what I'm saying is, take care of it privately, because at the next reading, we're amending this. If you're going to amend it as a council, you only have one more meeting, that's the third reading. If any of that has anything to do with this, better be done by the next meeting, because that's when the third reading's going to happen. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think it's very related, because we are handing over some funds to a person who's going to be handling this revolving fund and putting out loans, and I would like to make sure that this thing is tightened up so that we don't have any problems going future.
And I'm not arguing your question.
I know, thank you.
Procedurally, if it has nothing to do with what we're talking about, you may sit down with the manager and hash it out, and on the third meeting, we're going to vote if through. If it needs any amendments, that's the meeting we'll amend it.
Thank you.
You can amend it after the first, second, but usually wait to the third reading.
Okay.
We'll consider this the third reading?
Second.
I mean, excuse me, second reading, the third reading will be at the next meeting.
Postponed indefinitely, but you can.
Moving on to agenda, there's going to be a, I'd entertain a suspension of the rules to add agenda item 41.
So moved.
41A. Motion by Council Shinja, and seconded by Council Dow. We're going to be adding 48, 41A, which is below, I'll read it. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Tim D. Norris of the Norris, Murray, and Peliquin LLC for the purpose of serving as Labor Council for the Town of Southbridge. That is what we're going to be waiving the rules for, to add that. Any discussion on waiving the rules? No discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? All present? We just added 41A. I just read it. Do I have a motion to accept it?
So moved.
There's a motion to accept it?
Second.
And seconded by Council Shinja. Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, as you're aware, the Department of Public Works contract is coming up for negotiations, and we need to start that negotiation process. In my conversations with Dean, we've discussed our current Labor Council through KP Law, and we'd like to change from the Labor Council through KP Law to this individual. This individual has worked closely with Dean and John LaFleshe. They both come highly recommended, and I respect their opinions. They've done extensive work at the Bay Path School District on a number of contracts, so we would ask that we engage their services for these labor issues, not only with the DPW, but as well as personnel issues that are ongoing in the town. And we just feel that a fresh perspective on a new council is needed at this time. We do have one pending matter with KP Law that they will finish up with the Police Department, but anything new, I would ask that it goes through Tim Norris. The rate for KP Law is 245 per hour. Mr. Norris is at 240 an hour. Mr. Norris has done, I had communication with, I did discuss this with Chief Woodson, Mr. Norris had done some work on a contract with the Police Department, and not this past cycle, but the cycle before, when interim town manager Pecos was here. So he is familiar with the Town of Southbridge. He's familiar with our community, and I just think it's a, a great perspective to have. You know, his town council has to confirm this appointment. We do not have to do any procurement, because the procurement of attorneys are exempt from the Massachusetts procurement laws.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I think it's a great idea, especially I'm reading here, he doesn't charge for travel at all, copy, fax, local mile. There's a lot of things he's not charging the town. I think it's a great move. I, I'm going to really support it tonight. Thank you.
Council Rivas?
So I guess my question is, and you answered the procurement part, so thank you. Besides savings, which is great, you know, some cost savings, was there a sort of a reason? Did KP Law do something, you know?
It isn't that they, I, I do not believe they fit the needs for the community, based on some of the interactions that we've had with their staff. We do have a, a recent issue with the Police Department, and the comment from the attorney that Attorney Jenkins was that, you know, that the chief was not happy with the service from KP Law, and we were welcome to explore a different attorney with that firm. However, again, based on my conversations with individuals that I trust, and I think are well-known to the town, it is right for us to perhaps go in a different direction for our Labor Council.
Thank you.
Council Shinja, and Council Adams.
I'm just, we're not appointing a town attorney. Couldn't you just do this out of specialized services?
Well, it's paid out of specialized services, but any, Dean and I had this conversation about the charter and how the charter is laid out as far as council, the town council, town manager appoints, submits confirmation, the town attorney. The town may engage the services of any other council that we see fit. In his estimation, the town means the town council and not the town manager, so therefore that's why it's here before the town council for the special, for the special council.
Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on my experience, I highly recommend the council vote in favor of this this evening. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Dow?
Yes.
Councilor Lozo?
Yes.
Councilor Marquetti?
Yes.
Councilor Montigny?
Yes.
Councilor Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilor Rivas?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Shinja?
Yes.
Moving on to Council's forum. Council Rivas?
All right, so I wanted to start off with a reminder to families of students at Southbridge Public Schools this week. DESI's Office of Public School Monitoring will be on-site to review the tiered focus monitoring of special education and civil rights, including bullying and student discipline. The contact for the Office of Public School Monitoring is dywatt@d.ywatt@mass.gov to request a telephone interview. So parents who are not able to be on-site or be available for an in-person interview can request a telephone interview. There will be public access to their report on www.doe.mass.edu backslash PSM backslash TFM backslash reports. So really just letting parents know if parents have concerns or issues that they've had in special education or bullying. This is a great opportunity to go through that process and talk to the Office of Public School Monitoring. I also wanted to remind everyone that the school committee will have a special meeting tomorrow to go over the DESI plan that was reviewed, that Chair Lozo reviewed earlier today. They'll be meeting tomorrow at 6:30 in the Rice Conference Room. I also wanted to mention that Southern Worcester County, Worcester Community Action Council will be doing a community needs assessment, and they're going around our county. Wednesday, they will be here in Southbridge at the Kiva Center at 3:46 Main Street from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, and this is sort of a drop-in. They want people to come in and participate in focus groups around your thoughts on our community strengths and struggles. It is an opportunity to get our community voice heard in this assessment, and really, this is utilized by a lot of different community agencies to request funding, to apply for grants, and to really service our community, so I encourage people to participate in this Lastly, also wanted to mention that WCAC will be having its 17th Annual Community Baby Shower at LaSalle on 444 Main Street on Wednesday, May 15th, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. And WCAC's Healthy Families runs this baby shower for our community every year. It's a great event to really help new families who are in need. So if you know anyone that is, is kind of a new parent, send them over to that shower. It's a, it's a great event for our whole community. Lastly, one more thing. Cops and Kids, in partnership with the Wellstorm Inc., 504 Forever Young, Real 401 Productions, Southbridge Recreation, and many great community volunteers, will be putting together a basketball program for middle school to high school students in June, June 3rd, 10th, 17th, and 24th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Southbridge Community Center on Moore Street. And registration is through Cops and Kids at southbridgemass.org. Thank you.
Council Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you. Tonight, when I see those girls, the cheerleaders here tonight, I'm always was proud to say I'm from Southbridge, but tonight, I'm more and more and more proud, and, you know, it really, you know, it's beautiful to see the school, the cheerleader, the girls, all that work so hard to bring their town up to the final. So I am more and more proud to say I am from Southbridge. Thank you.
Council Shinja?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. This Thursday at the community center, they're having a health fair that's open to the general public. I believe 10 o'clock in the morning to probably 2:00 in the afternoon, they're more than welcome to attend. Katie did a good job of getting the vendors to be there and hopefully answer any of the community's needs with their health issues. The other thing that disturbs me somewhat, today the cheerleaders came here, and it's a wonderful thing what they've done, and the ability that they have to move forward. I'm a little disheartened with the response that Dr. Vallag gave towards the, the group to go further, and hopefully the town manager will be able to persuade them to let them move forward tomorrow. This past weekend, there was a news article done in New England News Channel that I believe doesn't tell the whole picture of what's going on at the high school. It is my belief that the students' discipline needs to come to light and be a hard look at the discipline instead of being a soft look at discipline. They showed staff at the school looking into the supposed, looking into the girls' room, but what the article didn't show was the total destruction that's taking place in that high school. Toilets ripped off the wall, sinks looked, ripped off the wall, pornographic graffiti being done in the bathrooms, and the plugging of the toilets with toilet paper, paper towels, and anything else that they can find. Thousands of dollars of damages has taken place at that high school. It's shame on the school for not reporting it to the public and letting them see the actual damage there. This past weekend, I saw the pictures of what's going on in that high school, and, and I'm very disturbed at the fact that this has happened. We are going to spend $39 million tomorrow to educate our kids, and my belief is, if the kids that are causing the disturbance, leave, leave the school. The school needs to have a hard look at them, expel them. Instead of looking at the numbers coming in, let's look at the numbers that, of the kids that want to be educated. It's a shame. I, I went to an event there a couple weeks ago, and the guest speaker happened to say that he's been to 1,000 high schools, and he found the, this high school the worst as far as discipline. Kids were walking out of the auditorium, disrupting the, the meeting. I personally didn't see that, but this is what I'm told. And then just recently, there was kids that went to a sporting event in the neighboring town, and the team was out of control and looked foolish, made the town look foolish. So I think it's time that this school department takes a hard look at discipline, and if those kids don't want to be educated, leave the school and let us educate the ones that want to be educated. Thank you.
Council Montigny?
Thank you very much. Just like to thank citizen member Mr. Julian, and then Council Shinja for bringing all those concerns up tonight, and, and thank you to the council for supporting the emergency motion. I think it is important, as the, we have that meeting tomorrow with this DESI's new plan. It seems like DESI's on board, and the school committee's on board, and Russell Johnston, a very, very effective leader, is on board, and it seems like the missing piece, I wish we could find out all the information, but the common denominator of the problem here might just be the receiver himself, so thank you very much.
Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just a reminder, Memorial Day Parade, May 27, 10:00 AM here, starting at the Town Hall, and I just want to wish all those nurses out there Happy Nurses Day. Thank you for all your service. That's all.
Council Ortiz?
I have nothing.
Council Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Why not Southbridge?
Your quote.
That's my quote. We had an airshow over the weekend benefiting cystic fibrosis, the opening of another eating establishment in town that was phenomenal. We had a carnival down in the flats, sponsored by the police, giving us four days of constant amusement. It's my understanding that we can finally get action on the rail trail, because the feds finally picked up their part of the bargain and signed the papers that needed to be signed. And we have a wonderful ending to the weekend this evening with our national championship cheerleaders. Why not Southbridge? Why not Southbridge? It's unfortunate that it had to be marred a little bit by some of what's gone up with the schools. I think that, I think that there are little tone deaf up there about what's going on and what's not going on, and what some of the needs are. going on and what's not going on, and what some of the needs are. In terms of the most recent incident that's been making social media with pictures and all, I don't think it's so much the question of monitoring as much as it is what's or who is appropriately able to do the monitoring. And I think that there was a tone deaf response on the part of that. And that's unfortunate, because we had a wonderful weekend. It shows nothing but good things to Southbridge. I'm proud to be a Southbridge resident. I'm very proud to be a member of the Class of 75. And I look forward to more, more good things coming to this town. Southbridge is a wonderful town, and you will never get me to believe otherwise. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Please, Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been getting some calls from, and text messages from residents about the Chapter 90 funds that they saw in article social, in the media, that Southbridge would be getting $490,000. And they wanted to know what we were going to do with the funds. I, I told them that I was presumed that Chapter 90 funds is for the roads. And a lot of people are still asking about the roads. And I know the town manager is aware of that. And I also, I, I think that there are some plans to fix some of the roads around town this year. But other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Moving on to 43, discussion of the next meeting date. Please, Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next meeting is Monday, May 20th, 2024, 7:00 PM in the council chambers.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion adjourned.